Help by them.
Catharsis for them to just.
Would you like me to send the wake up call?
No, okay.
The struggles of being rehired, right?
Yeah, well.
I figured you might have the boys, so.
Yeah, no, no, don't.
Fortunately, it hasn't been super.
I just stay up too late. Been used to it. Okay, I'm gonna lie. Yeah, I saw, I saw your message and I sat there and I thought.
No, I think Jeff said he's in a contentious meeting or something.
Do I really?
Well.
Uh, he's gonna join us via Zoom right now.
This is not a meeting. Tour.
Two hour public hearing. It was very contentious.
Can I pick up my order?
I don't know, that'd be great.
Building after them.
It's like I had, I have to, we have an Epson printer that I. It broke and it wasn't a year old. I can't.
Yeah.
Feed feed rollers or gears still on.
Yeah.
So I can't, I can't do the auto feed. And so I called them and they said.
Pretty much.
We had the same pictures of it, what parts broke and. Ink lines, I mean, it was crazy.
All right.
And they were in the.
Seven P M. On October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and time to bring this meeting of Bristol Redevelopment Commission to order. Start with roll call. Dean Renfro.
Here.
Beechey.
Here.
Kathy Burke.
Yes, here.
Greg DeHolsky.
Here.
And Doug D. Smith is here. Uh, we've got Deputy Clerk Treasurer Jill Schwartz.
Present.
Uh, Town Manager Mike Yoder.
Here.
Assistant Fire Chief James Haynes.
Hello.
Town Marshal Steve Pring.
Here.
And via Zoom, Alex Bowman.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Are you gonna need to control the meeting?
What's that?
You, are you gonna need to control the meeting for Alex to zoom in? Okay.
But he's not here yet.
Yeah. Well, as soon as he zooms in, let me know.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, first item is approval of agenda. Has everyone reviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
Any change is necessary.
No.
If not, the agenda, the stand is published. Uh, approval of minutes. Has everyone reviewed the minutes from the October second meeting?
Yes, yes.
I make the motion, we approve the minutes for October second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kathy, second by Jeff. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Jeff Beechey.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Doug D. Smith is a yes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Town Manager.
Okay, we've received two proposals to our request for proposals for the golf, Raver Golf Course, and we'll have Jill open these. Hopefully Alex gets on here soon. I expect that we will open these and understand that on the cover sheet, there is an option for a lease amount or purchase amount. But within the R F P, we've allowed that purchase amount to be cash or in kind investments. So we'll see how this works out. I'm guessing that you'll want Alex and I to score these and then I have scheduled an executive meeting with you on Thursday night at six thirty. Then we'll bring back our recommendations so we can further discuss at that point. So what do you have, Jill?
All right, the first proposal is from Willie.
Real.
Real. Willie and Melissa Reel. So the cover sheet, he has a bid amount, a purchase of two million dollars.
Look at the second page.
That's where I got it.
Next page.
That's where I was just at.
And then the executive summary.
All right, so purchase price components. So the first one is purchase Jeff Carmine's nine holes for one point three million. The second is a twenty twenty six investment into Raver of six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then the third is a payment to the town of Bristol of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with the summary.
Yeah, that's a letter from Jeff agreeing to sell to.
My property known as the Blue Nine for one point five million dollars. In the event that Willie Reel is awarded the contract to buy the town of Bristol's eighteen holes, I have agreed to sell the Blue Nine to Willie for one point three million. So after purchase of said land, the carts and equipment will be available to Willie.
So can you go through that, through those numbers again, Jill? So one point three million?
To purchase Jeff Carmine's nine holes.
Okay.
And then the second is a twenty twenty six investment into Raver of six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Along with the third item, the payment to the town of Bristol of ten thousand dollars. And Jeff Carmine has agreed if awarded the one point three for the Blue Nine, and it sounds like that include the carts and equipment.
The two million is for the eighteen hole.
No, no, that's.
That's.
Those.
For everything.
Three million. Yeah, his total investments, two million, broken down by those three eyes.
So basically, we is it, or the redevelopment commission, because redevelopment commission, that's the golf course would get ten thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars.
Yes.
Is there a breakdown of what that six hundred and ninety thousand investment would be?
The door, just ten grand, that's it.
Oh, we tell you what, why don't I make copies?
Yeah.
That'd be great, you would.
And you guys can take that home with you tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It does, but I don't know if that's a twenty twenty six investment amount. He doesn't break that down.
That's just for one year, Jill?
The payment?
That's sixty nineties for one year.
The investment, you have twenty twenty six investment to Raider, Ravers.
I think if we just get copies, we can make it, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll make it out.
Okay. We'll make copies of that and, yeah, but let's see what the other one has.
I need more time to read that, thanks for your. I'll let you go through that. Okay, what's your group's name?
Albatross.
New, uh, yes, it's a brand new L L C. We just set up with a management person called the Albatross.
The Albatross Group. It's purchase, we have a one dollar.
I'd have been that. Is that the breakdown?
This is a long term capital improvements. Do you guys want me to break down the potential long term capital improvements? Or we have a twelve month improvement plan as well. Here we go. There's a many purchase offer of one dollar in exchange for the transfer of full ownership of the property to the Albatross Group. Subject to the existing deed restriction, the car property remain in use for public park and recreational purposes. In return, they will assume a hundred percent of the operational maintenance and capital improvement costs necessary to sustain and improve the golf course for the town of Bristol in the surrounding community. There is a twelve month improvement plan along with a potential long term capital improvement plan.
Well, I think we'll just make copies of this and you guys can read everything in detail and we'll discuss it then during the executive session Thursday. Okay?
Yeah.
Oh, there's Alan.
Yeah.
That's only for eighteen there.
Yeah.
Hey, Alex, can you hear us?
You need me to transfer it to you?
No, he should be able to. Oh, yeah, you might. That's right, because of the audio.
There he is.
Sorry about that. Alex, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
We can hear you now.
Excellent.
So.
Wonderful.
As your legal secretary, I suggested the town council that we received two proposals tonight for the Raver Course. I suggested that you and I would score these. I'll send copies of everything home with the council tonight. And we have an executive session scheduled for six thirty Thursday to bring this back and discuss. Is that okay?
I think that it works.
It just occurred to me that the executive session is for the town council, not for the redevelopment commission. And we need an executive session. We need an executive session for both entities, actually, because of the topics, but.
Yeah.
You're, you're kind of breaking up.
The most appropriate body to hold the. Okay. Uh, the R D C is the most appropriate body for the executive session?
I've. I was thinking that the R D C needs to discuss this in an executive session. The executive session I have scheduled is just for the council. Uh, we have other real estate matters to discuss as well as this one.
From the, from the R D C perspective or from the town council perspective?
Town Council perspective.
Oh, okay. It should, uh, would it be, would it be okay to schedule a, an R D C executive session, I don't know, seven thirty, eight o'clock or something? That's still, that knows, still be published.
We're bumping up against the forty eight hour. Okay. Yep, we'll do that.
Okay.
So that'll be after our council meeting then. Okay.
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 Anything else for Malics?
Nope.
I know, for the R D C.
Okay. Um, Town Council. Any discussion items, Dean?
I'm sorry, Jeff? No.
Kathy?
Yes, wanna know, have you had anybody look at that tree on India on Elkhart Street?
Yes, they're gonna trim some branches, but they don't think the tree's going to fall over. It's well rooted, it's just grew crooked.
And it's just.
That's the council though, not R D C.
What's that?
That's our, this is R D C, not Town Council.
I know, you pointed that out.
It should have R D C. Should have R D C.
I know.
Okay.
Okay.
Just point of order.
I'll ask you later.
Okay.
Greg, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
A second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Greg, all in favor?
Hi.
We'll transition over to the Town Council work session. So we will call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October fourteenth. It is seven twelve P M. Call this meeting to order, the Bristol Town Council Work Session. Start off with a pledge of allegiance. Ken, will you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, the free and open government, where it stands, white nation, under God. In the next world, we will govern with justice for all.
Thank you.
You're great.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, uh, start with roll call. Start off to my left, Doug D. Smith.
Here.
Dean Renfro.
Here.
Kathy Burke.
Here.
Greg DeHolsky.
Here.
Jeff Beechey's here. Um, legal counsel via Zoom, Alex Bowman.
Here.
Uh, Town Marshal Steve Pring.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Treasurer, Assistant Town Manager Jill Schwartz.
Present.
Town Manager Mike Yoder.
Here.
And Assistant Fire Chief Jimmy Haynes.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes or questions or additions?
No.
Nope.
Okay, if not, the agenda will stand as published. Uh, we'll move right into reports. So, Mike.
Okay, so Thursday night, we have a rezoning of, uh, E W T, uh, Abby's property south of town. It's this property here. And so Ken brought maps and stuff and, while we talk through this, so we prepare Thursday night.
I'm going to, okay, and on Thursday night, I'm gonna be bringing you the, uh, of course, May will be here. So she will give you the staff report and the results of the plan commission, uh, review and, and vote, which by the way, is unanimous in favor. Okay, so what we did is something kind of unique, um, because we had originally been planning this as a G P U D or as, we did it as a original zoning is a P U D. And then during the process, um, we wanted to come out of the rezoning with, with an idea of how all of the lots were gonna be configured, uh, on the site. Uh, and still, uh, be able to honor what we originally told the property owners and council uh, in our original G P U D or the plan commission, our original G P U D proposal. So, um, same exact boundary for the rezoning and the, this is also the land that's, uh, been the subject of annexation.
Yeah.
And, um, the, the only difference is we brought it back to them and took it out of the P U D uh, classification, put it into a straight rezoning, and then put a subdivision, a industrial subdivision over the top of it. And, uh, plan commission kind of looked at it like, why are you doing that? And so when we got done explaining it, it was really, it's really allowing the developer and the future occupants of the lots to have a little bit more freedom as to how we move this thing through. The, the good thing about it is that it will still have all of the development controls attached to it that we originally discussed with the plan commission. And we also will have a, uh, back in when we were doing, doing the original zoning. And i- in this case, uh, we're, we've kind of writ, uh, wrenched down on that a little bit. We're using, and what I'll pass out to you on Thursday, are the, um, the uh, development covenants. They are very similar to what we use for the, um, the west end of Earthway Rail Park. So that would include M J B Wood and the, uh, and the, where, where AM General is now in that building. So, and those are the same, uh, development standards that we are currently using in what we call Area A of Elkhart East, which is, uh, north of the, uh, uh, kind of seventeen west of the toll road. So those include, uh, landscaping, um, storage area buffering. They're gonna be constrained as to where they can store, uh, um, raw product and finished material or finished product. Um, and they will be required to have like parking lot landscaping, all those kind of things that, you know, we wanna see, you know, in a kind of, just one step up from what you're typically, uh, accustomed to in Bristol. It's a really visible site, so it really needs to be, you know, a little bit higher end. Um, we also made sure that we included a, uh, uh, development standard relative to site weight. And, uh, and so, again, we were trying to mimic what we asked, um, M J B Wood and the Vandalay site to do. You know, where we're not having, uh, you know, everything's down directed and really kind of what we call, uh, night sky compliant. So, so this, this auto actually, uh, when, when it's, when it's proven going forward, which we think is, it's gonna get pretty hot pretty quick. Um, you, you should have, uh, maybe a, a, a little bit more elevated quality project when you, when you're done. And you really deserve that right on, right on your, one of your main gates. So. So sewer and water, uh, all gonna be built by the development. Uh, roadways, very similar to what we've already done everywhere else in town. We're using an open swale concept, eighty foot right of ways, all of that kind of stuff. So, uh, geometry, uh, for the approach point is exactly what we're showing here. Where we're gonna mimic the widening that was done on the west side. And, uh, and it'll be done basically the same on the east side. So you'll have a nice broad intersection there, uh, with plenty of turning space in there.
This may be a dumb question, but I, I can't place that piece of property.
Oh, um, so this is right immediately opposite of industrial drive. Absolutely opposite.
Here's, here's industrial drive.
Okay, all right.
There's the new store government, there's the.
So it's the garbage property.
Yep, yep.
Okay, well, that's all you had to say.
So, um, so this is gonna come to you, May, May Crasher from the planning, they'd be bringing that to you with a unanimous recommendation from plan commission. So, uh, even, we even got Brad Rogers to vote for it, so.
So the current zoning is a mix of M two, M one, and B three. Is that, I, I didn't.
Yeah, it's, it's all, we do, we do have a couple of M twos up here, um, but those are the larger sites and, uh, and that provides a little bit more flexibility. I think you're still gonna get the kind of little hand uses you're looking for, so.
So remind me, this has been annexed, correct? It has, yeah.
Yeah. So the one, there's a couple of things that are still pending. Uh, development agreement with the developer, uh, hasn't been brought to you yet. Um, we're, we're, uh, and I think the only reason for that is I, there's already been some uh, interest in, in some of the larger parcels. And I think what, uh, it could be the developer is thinking is if one of those larger parcels sold, she will have the funds available to do the development. Um, we're still encouraging her to put this in, you know, to ask her the redevelopment, uh, the development agreement so she can maximize the benefit of the tip. And, and then of course, town gets the benefit of the tip.
Yeah. So. So will this be a D P U D or?
No, this is gonna be an industrial subdivision with, uh, the zoning classifications are set for each lot.
Okay.
So, um, and again, there are some development standards that come along with it, talk about building facades and all that kind of stuff, and I'll share those with you Thursday.
Okay, so it's not a D P U D and it's not a straight rezoning, correct?
It is a, it is now a standard zone.
Okay.
But we've, we've identified exactly what each parcel is zoned for, and we're doing a, uh, industrial subdivision. And the top.
Okay.
So the benefit of that is, um, it kind of, it kind of uses the county, what the county allows under their ordinance to move the project along there. And, uh, we're, we don't have to come back in for a D P U D on every single lot when it develops. And I think, I, I think the county originally, uh, when they, when they did the G P U D, D P U D thing, I didn't think they, I don't think they really realized what that meant in, in terms of time, um, spent in bringing a project from inception to development. And so what we had in the past convinced them to do is to let us do a D P U D with a variance that allowed each one of the lots to only come back for approval at a staff level. They didn't realize, and so that's the way we did almost all of Elkhart East, Area D and parts of B. And then they, and then when they started, after we did that several times, asked for that variance, they came back and said, we don't, that isn't the way the, the, uh, uh, zoning ordinance is written. Now we want you to bring every single lot back individually as its own P U D. It would have taken forever to get that done. And, and I don't, and I don't know if that's completely registered with them yet. So we showed them a way that it can be done uh, quicker and easier, and they still get the same development control. So, and they were pretty happy with that.
Okay.
Um, so that'll be, uh, I'll bring that, I'll bring that, the rest of that material with you and, uh, and, and of course, May will be here. She'll be encouraging you to vote in favor of it and go forward.
Okay.
Um, or can we, you wanna spend a little time on the other topic?
Uh, next, yeah, not next. One more zoning thing, and then we'll go to the bigger picture.
Okay.
So. So there'll be one more zoning thing that'll be brought to you on the first Thursday in November. And just remember, I'll remind you, you are being live streamed, you are in public practice, so be cautious of your response. Uh, this is a long, uh, this is a lot of D P U D developments. This is along Commerce Drive. Uh, this right here is a G P U D, which should not have a building on it. That's talent, but it does. So the planning staff is making a recommendation on Thursday that we rezone all these D P U Ds to a straight M one. The planning staff is recommending a straight rezoning to an M one for this entire area. And I said, I thought we'd be okay with that. So that will be before you on Thursday, November sixth.
So those are already occupied.
Most, but all, some of them can do expansions. Let me just take off the zoning.
I was gonna say.
What triggered this is these guys are doing an expansion. They're not, they don't have a D P U D. They should have, and they don't.
Okay.
And then there's some other room for expansions in this area as well. So straight rezoning is fine, I thought.
So that, that piece of property where you were pointing at.
Here.
Includes the one below it, correct?
Uh, I was thinking a satellite.
Because that, that didn't have a, that didn't have a, uh, say that it was M one D P U D.
No, it's two different, it's two different parts.
Satellites.
Yeah, this is satellites.
Put a layer back up, Mike, if you would, please.
Yeah.
The zoning?
Yeah. Cause it didn't, see, it doesn't have a, if you X out of that box. See, it doesn't say.
D P U D here. It's part of this D P U D M one.
Why is it a second, separate entity?
Yeah, that was, that was done, it's all one D P U D.
Yeah.
And then the land divisions happened.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Oh, my gosh.
So I guess occasionally straight rezoning is okay with the staff.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah. Uh. So.
Hmm.
Let's move across the road to this property here, and, uh, Ken is here to talk to you tonight about what we might wanna see in this area.
Yeah, so you remember when this was annexed, right? This is the last activity we had on the site. We brought it in only for annexation. We didn't propose any zoning at that point in time, and, and it created a lot of dialogue here at the council with, joining neighbors and, um, and there's been a lot of thought about, you know, what should this property develop into? You know, what is most appropriate for Bristol? What's most appropriate for the, for the property? The night that we were here, um, doing the annexation, I think people thought we were in the process of zoning, which we weren't.
Right.
And, um, and it, so it generated a lot of comments. And, uh, people from across the river, you know, and, uh, joining to the south, the timber, timber, uh, trails there. And, um, and I think, uh, rightly so, I think the council decided it wasn't the time to make any comment or dialogue on it. We did come away from that meeting thinking that it, it might be that, that the council didn't support a, uh, a, uh, business use or manufacturing use on this particular site and that it might, it might be appropriate for some other land use. Um, after a lot of talking back and forth with the development group, Abby, her advisors, um, even from J P R's viewpoint, and again, what we think doesn't matter. It's really what the council thinks. Um, we, we don't see how it works, uh, as a residential site. And, uh, you know, where it's located, the fact of the matter is that it, it is kind of, you know, kind of lends itself well, the size of the site. Uh, you know, the setting along the state highway, immediate neighbors to the east is all manufacturing. What I, what I think in, and the goal at some point in time is for, for us to maybe get a, uh, maybe a small working group from the council, meet with the property owner and talk through it. And, um, is there something that the council could feel more comfortable with if there were some, uh, reasonable buffers incorporated into the development plan? And, uh, and then we could also consider some land use buffers as well. But, um, now. But um now, Abby basically has said, well, I'll just keep the land as long as I have. You know, um but on the other side of the coin, she is getting pressure for it to come to the market. And uh and it, and to be honest with you, the pressure for it to come to to the market is not coming from residential. It's coming from, you know, industrial. So uh she has said. Well, if we could talk to the council, the council says we've, we've lost some kind of land use buffer, especially along the river. So she's good with that. We just need to know what that looks like and who's gonna take care of it once it is dedicated to buffer. Um, and uh, you know, and and and. Development controls, um you know, there, there are um a lot of examples. Of good, strong uh development that's occurred elsewhere in the county. That does sit within some reasonable proximity to residential. Um, I would point, to be honest with you, um I would point to, uh again, I don't wanna keep using the same. Uh uh projects, but I would point to Alcardes. And and have you at some point in time take a drive and look at some of the ways that that development occurred. And they had no problems filling that site up with quality tenants. Um, and um, does this site call for that? I think it kind of does. You know, um and if you go through especially area, what we call Area D, which is. South of County Road six, west of County Road seventeen. Um, you know, kind of in the southwest quadrant of County Road six and County Road seventeen. Um, there is uh very little, if any, outside storage going on in that section of Alcardes. Every single site is required to have landscape, every single site is required to have buffer parking. Um, you know, uh it 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 really, and you know what, the thing is full, they don't have one lot left. So there's a demand there. Is that demand in Bristol? I think it could be. You don't have to do every project the same way over and over again. You know, where you're putting a three hundred thousand square foot building surrounded by concrete, it it can be, it could be uh. Really kind of take on the the concept of uh, you know, a business park. And um, I I think that's kind of somewhat what you're gonna see in the property we just got to talk about as well. Because we did incorporate smaller lots in there, there's only two very large size. Uh, you know, what we would say, what we call big box locations, uh even in the ones in the south. So. And here's the thing, right now, she, you know, she's like, she's got no burning desire to move this forward. Um unless the council, uh you know, unless they, unless she can come to the council and maybe work together and come up with something that works. And uh, and you know, if you go to, here's another thing, if you go to Alcardes. Area D, even Area E, which is where the Hall of Fame is, you know. Um, you know, we're doing a massive improvement to the uh, to the uh, uh, used to be. Big count, um now gonna be.
The glory.
Now gonna be Thor headquarters.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um and uh, uh. You know, the build, the quality of the buildings that they require to be put into there. They're meant to be that way, they're meant to be kind of more top drawer. And uh visible up against the toll road, same kind of thing, you know, so. Why can't that happen in Bristol? That's, there's no reason why it can't happen in Bristol. It might take them a little longer to sell it. But the quality of the buildings and the construction will be elevated. Therefore, the value per square foot will be elevated. Um, you know, the way it presents to the road. And all of that kind of stuff, you can ask for whatever it is you feel comfortable with, I'm just saying. If if she really wants to go forward with a project here, I think you can ask for. You don't have to settle, is what I'm saying, you know. So, and by the way, these are not her words and they're not Pete Leatherman's words, they're my words to you.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, you know. It's worked elsewhere, you know. And uh, so the property owners, one of the biggest things that we heard was, oh, trash and noise and stuff like that, and. Um, if you go look at some of these other developments that happened in Alcard. Um, where we required the standard to be elevated, uh you don't see that. Don't see trash, uh you don't see, you don't see uh uh any kind of inordinate. You know, objectionable noise coming from those properties. And uh, you know, I I I feel like it's uh, you know, really, if you think about it. You know, Al Ludwig used to say, you know, the best thing about our developments going in near residential. Is that it becomes a uh, after five o'clock, the residents can filter over into the park and ride their bikes. And walk their dogs and not have any concern about traffic, they're, you know, lit streets, everything about it. You know, I mean, it can also be used for their personal recreation, and that actually happens. You know, uh, we uh, uh so anyway, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is. Ask her to come in if she really wants to talk about it, and say, we just don't want the same thing. We want something better. And then let her decide whether there's something that she can live with, and uh.
And I, I see your point with the other developments, but there's one key component here that doesn't exist in those other developments. That's this right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The river.
Yeah.
You've got wildlife, you've got.
Yeah.
You've got fish, you've got deer, you've got other critters.
Yeah.
You've got eagles that nest on the river.
Yeah.
Um, the. Call them remonstrators because they were, they they were remonstrating against zoning, not against annexation. But they had some very valid points.
Yeah.
Um.
So, so you know, when we've talked to her about this, um, we've told her that. Oh. You're gonna have to allocate a buffer there. The question is, what do you do with the buffer? And who's, who's gonna take care of it? Are we gonna take care of it? Do we, does it need to be cared for? I don't know. But.
Wildlife preserve.
Yeah, yeah, I I feel like, um, you know. There's probably, so over at Alcardes, Area G, where the Amazon building is. Um, what you don't see in the middle of that site is about seventy acres of wetland. That is uh uh basically being preserved. We did that on purpose because number one, couldn't do anything but. And number two, okay, let's hold back from it, provide a buffer around it, let it be what it wants to be. I think the family, you know, uh since Al is no longer with us. The family is uh talking about putting that in permanently in reserve. Uh like with the foundation or some other, you know, we, when we did the. When we were doing the uh wetlands investigation on that site, um, we've, we uh. Asked for um, trying to remember who, what, which, whether it was federal or state, we asked for some. Other folks to come in there and look, because our wetland guys found some uh, found some plants that they considered to be. Uh unusual, and they did, they went in there and the 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 people from the state went in there and said that. There's plants in there that need to be preserved because they would provide seed stock.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that site, uh in that scenario will never change, it'll always be that way. So that same thing could happen here, if we could find a not-for-profit. To take a river preserve or whatever you wanna talk, talk, you know, whatever we wanted to do about that, filter strips. All the way along the edge there, um, you know. I mean, there's, there's no reason for us to wanna put stormwater in the river, we don't need to, not in that, not in that soil.
Right.
Well, and not only that, but um, like with what, as far as a buffer is concerned. I would like to see a large buffer because living on one side of the river myself. And I don't know, Jeff, Jeff lives on the river, but living as far away from the river as I do. I can hear everything that goes on on the other side of the river.
Yeah.
The water will, I mean, at night, you can sit there and listen to the cars on the toll road.
Yeah.
Uh, but um, and I think that's something that they, the residents may be. Part of their, their thing too, because you know, the water reflects sound.
Yeah, I would say, uh I would say again, if you. If you, if you tell the landowner that we would support rezoning, um. Uh. And and then ask for development controls, similar to what we applied in some of those areas of Alcardes. You uh, uh, well, typically all of those buildings are, I mean, the lights. Go off and they're gone at five o'clock, there's nothing happening. And most of, there isn't any, there, there isn't any outdoor, you know.
Yeah.
It's not the, not the same as what you might see in a manufacturing site elsewhere in Bristol. Or even in Alcard for that matter, so.
So I I fully support looking at.
Yeah.
A conversation with Abby.
And and I think that's all you need to do, and you know, from my perspective, you know, from, I think even from her perspective. She'll leave it in fireland if if she can't come up with something that is comfortable for you.
Yeah.
And uh she doesn't want to be confrontational, uh and you know, the thing. I think the best, I think the best opportunity for Bristol to get something a little bit different and maybe ask. For uh, you know, to bump the quality up a little bit, is to deal, is probably work with her. Working with somebody else, you might not get that.
That's true.
Yeah.
You know.
Cause I, I, I'll go back to something I said that night of the result of the annexation. I made a statement that night that I wouldn't support manufacturing there. And I'll be honest, can I still stand by that? Now, that said, um, if. Because what what I'm concerned with are the people over here, right? All these people over here in the water itself.
Yeah.
Now, if we come back to. Buffers, right? So maybe it's something like a buffer that goes from here.
That's right.
Right through here. You know, does this eliminate a lot of our property? Yeah, right here it does. But I'm, I'm talking like a buffer that is, you know, we talked about the data center buffer being eight feet tall. I'm thinking something like twenty feet tall.
Yeah.
That's lined with trees from the buffer all the way to the river's edge. Well, and so you would still, would would she lose a lot of this? Because, you know, we also need to consider this neighbor right here. So maybe it's something that goes out around like this. Down here, so this is all still natural, and from this side, the only thing that the, that the neighbors would see. Would be basically a grassy mound covered with trees. And I think the building restrictions would also be appropriate to say that the, the building can be no higher. It has to be below the height of the burb.
Mm-hmm.
Again, that's just me thinking out loud right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you because, like I said, the river. No matter what kind of company you put in there, you're still gonna have noise.
You are.
And that, and the river, I'm gonna tell you, reflects so much noise.
And you're gonna see, you're gonna see light, e- even with the, the dark sky lights, you're still gonna, you're still gonna get lights.
And I.
You're still gonna get sound.
I can tell where the fire trucks go. Because I can hear him on the other side of the river.
Sure.
Going down the road.
Yeah.
So, you know, the river does do a, and if. If I lived there, I don't live that close to the river, he does, but I'd live, I live more like back in this area.
Yeah.
Um, and.
So, so when, the last time I had this discussion with her and Pete about this. We had sent them a professional proposal for pre-planning and and uh, you know, the county came back, well, we we really. We're, we're, we're a long ways away from wanting to bring that back to the town yet. And so they preferred not to engage and start paying us to do pre-planning.
Yeah.
Without coming in and having some kind of dialogue.
Yeah.
And I said, you can talk. I mean, go and see what, I mean, you can see what the temperature is, if, if, if you don't get a level of comfort from the council. Then you keep doing what you're doing, you know, the fire repeat fire minute.
Yeah.
And uh, and you know, and uh, I think at some point in time, somebody's gonna, you know. Uh if it's not her, it's somebody else will bring you a hard proposal, and then you'll have something like that, but.
Right.
You know, I, my uh, my strong, my strong feeling is that. And just, just from what I, what I've seen happen. At maybe some of the others interchanges in Alcard County and elsewhere. You know, there's a reason why you're seeing the business cluster happen there.
Yeah.
And and there's a reason why you're not seeing housing clusters happen.
Yeah.
Or.
And uh, I mean, the, the, the value of the land, the connection to the Indiana toll road.
Yeah.
It's all about business, really.
Yeah.
So the question is, can you get something that you feel comfortable with, feel comfortable supporting?
Yeah.
And so I think the only way you do that is get her to come in and talk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Here's the perfect situation. Build a big buffer, put Shelby over there. Museum and production, yeah, that's a low-impact production.
I reached out to him, he hasn't responded yet, this, I'm just trying to get in, I welcomed him to town and said, what's your plans, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, you know, there, you, I mean, you never know what you might get, I mean, if you, if you get a chance to go. Over to Alcard Drive Down and and go through the development outside of East Area D, which is again. Southwest quadrant of the intersection seventeen and six. Um, when we started building that, you know, um, Al wasn't. He wasn't necessarily the first one to do that. Um, the uh. Uh Jim Wagner, uh kick, kind of kicked that, that, that off a little bit with uh Remington Park. Um, the one with the big horse and.
Yeah.
Yep.
And uh, the only difference was that Remington Park still had the large format buildings. Uh where if you go into Area D, the lots are all smaller, and the buildings are about half that size.
Look great.
Yeah.
The buildings are really nice out there, it is a, like you said, it's a ghost town, like you go by the three, four o'clock, there's nothing.
Yeah, it's quiet, and they don't, I mean, there isn't any. Uh, there, the, the land, the use restrictions there pretty much forbid you from doing outside operations.
And that's south and west of Hull, right?
Yeah, Hull was on the, right on the corner.
Yeah, that's on the point.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And that had, that had multiple uh use classifications when we did that BUD. Where Hull was, we actually expected there to be a uh. Convenient store there.
Yeah.
But that, they never, no one ever expressed interest, they went on the other side.
Yeah, Casey's.
Yeah.
Yep.
So uh, so Hull, Hull stepped up and got that one, but.
Yeah.
Um, you know, uh, I, you know, I feel, I'm somewhat proud of being involved in that project because. When Al proposed that, we were all like, really? Is that what you're gonna do? And uh, and, and then in the end, what he, what he believes was possible actually happened.
Yeah.
So, and the property owners to the south, where, you know, there was a, there were some pretty. Significant homes around there that go on the west side and on the, on the south side.
Yeah.
And he went to them and said, don't worry, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a buffer here, and that buffer's for you. It's not for us, it's for you.
Yeah.
And, and he did exactly what he said he would do. And uh, and it turned out well, and I'm, I'm not sure, you know, Abby certainly isn't a developer.
Right.
That's not, thank, she's, she does have some help, you know, Pete Leatherman and Northland Corporation are. Giving her advice, but they're really not, I think they're helping her sell land, they're not partners, so, but. Anyway, so that was just the point of it, I wanted to say, if, if, if she wants to come in. Then we would get together with whoever you guys wanna have, you know, just to talk about it.
Yeah.
Maybe we do that in a work session, is that possible?
Yeah.
You're not gonna make. You're not gonna make any decisions, you know.
We can definitely have a conversation with her.
Well, I'll, I'll take that back to her.
Okay, so, thank you.
You're not, yeah, you better stick around. We're gonna talk about turbine power. Uh, so I moved to the south side of town. This is uh, the Wilhelm Farm right here. Paul, we reasoned part of this for. Data's, I don't know what tips.
Straight rezoning.
Why am I? How did that become M one all the way through?
It's M one with a, with a single use.
Oh, right, A one, so over here. No, Ken, this is including more than the data center land. This is the data center land. This over here is still A one, I thought. Isn't it?
That was all that. No, it was, it. That was all in.
Okay, okay. So, um, we've actually had, uh, Ryan has had an inquiry on some of this land over here that's still A one and. Since it's still not zoned properly, it's been a little bit of a headache.
Put those layers back on, please, Mike. Oh, okay, yeah, that was, yeah, that, that's all the data center. That's all, yeah, that's all, this was the.
Yeah, so he was trying to get the rest of this done. M one, straight P M one zoning. So we've uh. We've encouraged him to go backward with the G P D M one, so we can get it out of A one and it's already approved for M one uses. Now, the reason that's becoming somewhat important now is, um. So right up here is a natural gas line. It goes right through here. High, high pressure, high volume natural gas line. So there's been two, maybe three inquiries to put gas turbine power generation in this area here. One would be connected to a data center, but others would be just producing power for A E P or NIPSCO. So I wanna run that use by you. They have all said that they will meet our uh, sound noise standards. They will be less than our noise standards. That does fall under an M one or an M two usage and it would be ten to fifteen acres.
So I would, I would back up the conversation just a little bit. So Ryan came to us with a straight M one rezoning. May was adamantly against that. We voted it down. Why can't we do the same thing here that Ken just did, sell the town? It's, it's in essence a. A straight rezoning with a, with a.
The only difference with, with.
Industrial park.
Is in that situation, south of town. We have decided to define the road of routing and the lots.
And we don't know that here.
And exact, how many decibels are we talking? Because the reason why I ask. It's because we set a restriction, you know, we have the ordinance on decibels. And we do have a place in town that violates that almost every single weekend. And that was the provision that they could do, follow me, I'll say it. That they could do it staying under those. When I can hear the music at my house, they're on the other end of town. That's why I'm, I'm really sensitive with decibels, especially when you're near residential areas.
My biggest concern is, this is a turbine. This is constantly running. This isn't generators cycling off whenever they're programmed to middle of the morning. I mean, our noise standard is one thing, but to have that at the noise standard nonstop twenty-four seven. I'd, I mean, I'd wanna know what the actual decibels are talking, not, we're gonna meet the requirements. I wanna know what they are. I mean, I think it could be good because our generation, Indiana right now has a problem, but. Decibels could be a real problem.
I mean, it's a substantial investment, but noise was the very first thing I raised with all the entities.
So how many, how many entities are we talking about? I thought you said three, right?
Three have expressed interest.
Do any of those entities have an operational? Turbine where? If we can get a location of where, I'll go check it out.
This one that just, the offer just came in, their latest one is in Pennsylvania.
Well, I mean, before everybody goes to it, I can find some reasons out there.
So I, uh. Uh, the problem for Ryan right now is that. One of the entities was trying to partner with a data center because that's the latest trend, data centers. They've gotta have their own power generation. So the offer he has here is not with the data centers, just standalone power. So there would be a natural gas line easement down to the power generation site. Then there'll be another roll of, row of poles going across. Where the two are now, they're gonna have a third one all the way over here. Unless they require them to parry the lines, which adds substantial cost. Uh, so Ryan is, I, I don't know what Ryan's going to do. The sisters apparently are not in a hurry to sell, sell. I still think this spot is prime for a data center. I think Ryan is waiting for a data center hit. Yeah, before he pulls the plug, pulls the trigger, powered turbine center home, like.
So is Pennsylvania the closest location of it?
Uh, that's all I know about this company right now, so.
NIPSCO is somebody private gonna sell.
To NIPSCO or A E P, yes. You and I had a conversation about the possibility of. That was a, that was the first partner. This, now we're two down. So that other one involved another business as well, which we can't talk about tonight. So that one is still on hold. That was with the data center as well. That was data center, power generation, and then that third business we can't talk about. It's not cocaine.
We didn't talk about.
Yes, that would be where the town would actually get a cut of the uh. Would get a percentage of the power generation uh, revenues. And that was pretty significant.
Now, is that, is that applicable to all three?
Uh, the other two have not mentioned that yet. So I was waiting to see how serious Ryan was before we started going down that. So I think, I'm, I'm judging correctly that noise is going to be our primary.
That's gonna be, it is gonna be a big concern.
And is there any impact to local utility bills?
No, because, well, probably not.
Well, as far as gas going up because there's.
I can't answer that.
I mean, like, I mean, utility bills near you are going up. I mean, electric bills are going up, so if there's a draw on gas.
So there's plenty of natural gas around where there's not plenty of power. So I, just a guess that it's probably gonna be minimal. But on the flip side. The NIPSCO or A E P, A E P puts in infrastructures for data centers. We're paying for that. That is showing up on our utility bills. So if we can prevent that expenditure. Then we're actually probably in the big picture, preventing some utility increases. That's the reason NIPSCO has just. Received approval to create a separate company to buy power and sell to data centers and keep it off of the other infrastructure. So their intent, it's, it's a first step towards deregulation, but it's an attempt to isolate that data center cost from other consumers.
Yeah, I'd, I'd really like to know how many decibels.
Yeah, we're not driving out to Pennsylvania. I mean, that's what it takes. I mean, I got some forty weekends. I mean.
Yeah, let's see. This is a, a long-term project because the turbines are. Made by, or made to order and they're already. They, it would be, he said, a year and a half out for the.
It's not as bad as I was expecting, honestly.
There's gotta be one closer around.
Well, there's some peaking plants, which would probably give us, you know, NIPSCO's got some peaking plants, you know, when. Energy usage is up, they turn all these turbines. So that would be a possible.
You'd still have to know comparable size and all that.
So this, this would be, it, it's not a large footprint, but it would put out a bunch of power.
And a lot of noise. Okay.
All right, seems like there was another land use issue, but I don't remember what it was, so I think we're. Oh, Thursday night, the executive session for the council. Is in regarding to purchase of some right-of-way for several of our projects. So Ken must talk to us about that in executive session, so we agree on prices.
Twelve executive session, six thirty.
Six thirty. And we've just posted an executive session for eight o'clock for the R D C to discuss the. Proposals, which we'll make copies of that and get it to you.
Or can I just email them to you guys tonight?
Send an email is fine.
See some trees.
Save trees. Okay, otherwise, that's all I have unless you want updates on our massive amounts of projects.
We can see it.
What's the, what's the status of fifteen south?
Uh, the barrels might be coming out tomorrow. Isn't that what they said? By the, I heard tomorrow.
I would rather land on the end of the week.
Land on the end of the week. How about, um, Saint Joe?
Oh, my gosh.
They were done with Saint Joe.
Always working on it, but it's closed.
Yeah, they've got some cement work to do and a little bit of work around freedom and uh.
So who's doing that?
Yeah, well, they did have it open. From one block until Frontier moved in and blocked it this morning. And uh, so that's, that's just been a, a challenge.
I'll just, I, I don't mind going on record. I'm glad that's why we have Niblock do most of our work.
Yes, I agree.
They care. They care. They're in towns, they live here. And, and I don't even think it's that. Because they're like this on all their other projects. They care. It doesn't matter if they, if, if it's a Bristol project or a Millbury project or a Walker Roost project, Gosha project, Niblock cares. And I appreciate Chad and Chase and how they run their business. I'm not as impressed with Bree Riley. And if they're listening, that's okay.
I'm not either.
Boys followed in their dad's footsteps. I did real well.
What's the road directly west of me? Got Illinois and then is it Elm? They did a gorgeous job on Elm. Niblock did. It's beautiful road.
They always do.
So, uh. Yeah, there's, there's just a lot of activity going on with all of our projects right now. I, I understand the basketball court was the, began tearing that up yesterday. So we'll have a new basketball court at Romance, uh. Cummins, sorry. We uh, we are now planning to do another under river, uh, water main on the east side of the bridge. We're going to extend the main. The current main that's there that's, is problematic. So we have a new valve on the north side and. On the Condon Park area, so we can now isolate everything north of town. So if there's a problem. From that point south of the bridge, we, we don't have to shut everybody off of water. So. We just determined last week that maybe the best option for us to complete that area is to, to put another main starting somewhere in. Memorial Park or a little south there in directional board under the river and come up in Condon Park where we have the new. The new valve that we inserted this week or yesterday, Monday. Uh, so that project is happening sometime. I don't know if that'll get done this year or not, maybe. Uh, Memorial Park work still has to be done, water main work there. The NIPSCO project I shared with a few before. We all in here, we were talking about the gas line that's hanging on the bridge. Okay, so. That's the one they're trying to bring the south and the east and the west together to go to that line to the north. And uh, so the original, the original projection was two weeks, maybe three weeks of bridge closing. What they found over the weekend under, underneath may extend that for another two weeks or. Uh, they've come up with an idea that they said today, the engineer said, we've never done this and we think we can do this, but. Makes a ton of sense as they take the gas line that's along the west side of the bridge, go do a ninety down. In directional board directly south and connect to all their gas lines. If they do that, they thought they might be able to get the bridge open quicker. So we're hoping that that's what they choose.
Sounds good.
Other than that, there's some more trees that are gonna be coming down uh, for the end up project. We just learned. That was on division, right?
One was on south division and one was on just a little west.
Just a little west.
North or south side of the road?
South.
South side?
So anyways, lots of moving parts right now, but.
Door center parking lot.
So the.
Oh, that one.
The Niblock project at the bridge right now. You said they're re- relocating the lift station?
Yeah, there's a new lift station in Condon Park. So we're, we're making the connection from the old one. Under the road, well, yeah, under the road to the new one, then that, that old, oldest station will be decommissioned, removed.
Okay, and that's one, wherever they took out the big Sycamore? Okay, so that one will come out altogether.
Yeah, whatever they do with it. I don't know if they leave the pit in the ground and just remove stuff above. It's a good question. I never thought about what they, what they leave.
They'll probably leave it. They'll probably just take the top off.
I forgot I had an engine in the room.
So it'll just be a through pipe instead of a lift station.
Yeah, yeah, they'll, you know, they'll, they'll abandon the structure and probably. You know, I don't know what they've said with the plans, but, but you won't, you, you won't have any of the apparatus up on, on the grid anymore.
It'll just be dirt.
That's what Niblock is doing. They are trying to the gravity line that comes to that lift station to the new one. And then they go on back over to the force main after it comes up to the bridge on the west side.
Yeah, so there was a little bit of complication with the force main, uh, with Doug Gray and his property right there, but I think we've got that resolved and. So like I say, that seemed to go pretty well. The inserted valve that we've put in the water main, that was, uh. What, how, what do you call that? Transite. Uh, there was always a chance that that would crack once you start drilling it. So the line was live, so they, they inserted valve. They drilled it live and inserted the valve and. It actually went super smooth and didn't take that long. We have lots of pictures. I'll show some of those Thursday night, maybe. Maybe even bring in the piece of concrete. Oh, the coupon, yeah. So they brought that in staff, uh, Jim's got that. Show you what it looks like. He said it's remarkably. Yeah, the pipe has been in there so long, it's just like super clean.
Since the sixties, yeah.
You, that just, that's a test coming to your water. It really is. Usually you don't see transite look that good.
Nice. And we've had lots of interest in the B O T for our street department. I've lost track of the number of contractors I've talked to that are looking to put an offer in that. One told me today a price he was aiming at was in the mid-six hundreds. Which is quite a bit below our maximum. That's all I got. Gone long enough.
Jill, Alex, anything?
Yeah, I just appreciate the uh, the council's patience and accommodation.
Hope your thing turned out okay. That you were at today.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is my uh, best trial outfit. And I haven't had a chance to take it off yet.
Did you win or lose?
Well, it's under advisement, so. But we've got good feelings about it.
Executive session Thursday night at six thirty to discuss real estate purchases. Other than that, is there a motion to adjourn?
In seven thirty.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Doug, taken by Kathy, all in favor? Motion by Doug, taken by Kathy, all in favor?
Hi. What'd you say?
Okay, thanks, everybody.
We said that we're having a public for the R D C meeting.